Good morning, everybody. Welcome. Today is the recording on. Great. I call this meeting to order, a special meeting of the Isla Vista Community Services District Board Directors, Saturday, November eighteenth, twelve oh six P M. Spencer, can you take role?
Director Bertrand.
Present.
Director Jordan.
Present.
Director Brandt, I'm here. Director Freeman, here. Director Hedges, Director Geis, Director Thurlow.
Okay, we have a forum, four members here, and all announced that the meeting's being recorded. That's the only reason that we did that weird role thing. But we want to do introductions right now if everyone wants to go around.
Sure. I'm Carlos. I'm a member of the, I'm a director in the Isla Vista Recreation and Parks Board, but not speaking on behalf of that for today, and I've lived in I V for the last five years.
Awesome.
Hi, my name's Isha. I have recently been doing some course adoption talks, so I kinda came just to get a better understanding of, like, Isla Vista governance overall.
My name is Jessica Alvarez-Parker. I'm a student, and I'm very interested to hear what's gonna be said here, working with a sociology professor on an ECO Vista project, so let me see how we can work together.
Hi, I'm Gordon. I'm just trying to get more and more involved in my local community, so I'm excited for that.
Hi, my name's Anthony. I am a member of the UCSB Senate this year. I've been living in I V for, this is my second year now, so I've been so stuck with, like, internal school stuff and trying to get outside of that for a bit, so that's why I wanted to come out today.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bhattachar. I'm the external vice president for local affairs in A S.
I'm Lanny. I am a lecturer at UCSB in economics and on the board of the Isla Vista Community. Which one is it? Thank you. I'm U C D C, and I first lived in Isla Vista in nineteen sixty-one.
My name's Jacob LaBelle. I'm one of the directors of the Isla Vista Recreation and Park District with Carlos, but again, not representing them here today.
Okay. I'm Emily Murray. I'm a student, an Isla Vista resident, and also president of Campus Nervous.
And one person we miss.
Oh, I'm Eric. I'm from the Delianx, I'm just here.
Awesome. Thanks for being here, and feel free to come closer.
I was wondering if the table's just for.
Yeah, if you want, just pull up the chair, you're good. All right. So, without further ado, we're gonna get started with just a brief presentation to kind of frame our discussion, and then we'll dive right in.
Yeah. Well, thank you, everyone, so much. So, my name's Spencer Brandt. I'm a third-year student at UCSB. I'm also the secretary of the board and a director on the Isla Vista Community Services District. So, glad to see you all here. We'll dive right in. My computer will allow it. All right. So, what is the I V C S D? I think a lot of you are probably pretty familiar. We are a local government that's called Community Services District, or a special district that is chartered by California law. We have a number of powers, things we can do. We can contract for police protection services for the community. We can provide tenant landlord mediation services. We can provide parking restrictions and regulations. We can manage community facilities. We can construct and maintain streetspikes, meaning sidewalks, lighting, gutters, trees, things like that. We can provide graffiti abatement, and we can fund municipal advisory council and an area planning commission, which are two different sort of units of government that are advisory in nature. Some more background. So, how we got here? Assembly Bill Three is a bill that passed the state legislature in two thousand fifteen. It was written sort of by the community in this room right here. Over the course of about two years, the community held regular meetings, largely in response to everything that had been happening in two thousand fourteen, and a lot of the unrest that had occurred, whether we're talking about the Del Tobia riots, whether we're talking about the May twenty-third tragedy, and said, what can we do to prevent these things from happening again? What can we do to prevent this sort of lack of attention that has characterized Isla Vista from different stakeholders that have been involved in here at the governmental and university level, and try to channel the energy that is here right now to make some improvements into something that's lasting? And out of that came this idea for a Community Services District. Assembly Bill Three, after it passed and was signed into law, authorized our eight initial services. The eight initial services that we are authorized to do are specific to us, and many of them are services that other community services districts provide. Many of them, or a couple of them, are services that only we are authorized to provide. The bill sort of was custom-made for the community needs at the time. So, out of that, part of the formation process was that the Community Services District did not follow the regular process by which we would create a local government. It sort of sidestepped that process and sidestepped this thing called the Local Agency Formation Commission, which usually has the say on those things. But there were a couple of areas where the Local Agency Formation Commission did have a say over what was gonna be put forward to the voters, because in California, and what A B three stipulated, both the creation of the district and our funding mechanism did need to be funded, or did need to be voted on by the voters. So, Measure E two thousand sixteen was placed on the ballot by LAFCO and the County Board of Supervisors. It is the ballot question right here. It's a very simple question. Shall the formation of the Isla Vista Community Services District pursuant to Government Code, Section six one two five oh, be approved? And these are the results right here of what we saw in two thousand sixteen. Around fifty-six hundred people in Isla Vista went out and voted yes for that, and around eight hundred and thirty-four voted no. Measure F was the utility user tax. The C S D is authorized to levy a utility user tax, as sort of came up with by the community, with the only district in all of California that is authorized to levy a utility user tax. And we are also required to authorize a utility user tax if we wanna stick around. In, uh, in two thousand sixteen, the, the process to put this on the ballot went, again, sort of sidestepping through LAFCO, but did give LAFCO one important thing, which is that they had a ceiling and a floor for how low and high they could set the percentage rate of the utility user tax. Which, to back up a little bit, utility user tax just means it's basically a percentage tax of the total charge of the utilities of gas, water, electric, sewage, and garbage disposal services. So, many of us, I think, probably are familiar with gas through SOCOM gas, water through the Belita Water District, electricity through Southern California Edison, sewage maybe through the Belita Sanitary District, and garbage disposal services. That's something that sort of the county picks up through a different sort of a contract. So, some of these are things that you would see and that you pay. Different landlords in Isla Vista, if you are a renter, pick up certain utilities, some of them don't pick up any of them. Some of them provide all of them, and it's part of sort of what your rent is. If you are a homeowner, then you're definitely familiar with all of these bills, and this is, uh, this is how it would go. So, right here are the results from how things went in two thousand sixteen. I have highlighted at the top that the tax requires two-thirds plus one. That is per California law. There were around four thousand voters who voted yes on this measure, and around twenty-five hundred who voted no. So, since then, we've been in this interesting situation where the district has been created, but we have not been funded by a dedicated revenue source. Nevertheless, we began operating on March first of two thousand seventeen when we first came into being. At our first meeting, we elected a president, a vice president, and a secretary. Since then, we've leased office space from the county right next door. Got that up and running. We've assumed management of the community room, which is this room that you're sitting in here now, and is available for booking, I will say as a little bit of a plug, if you have a group that wants to meet, and that is free of cost. We've secured around twenty-three thousand dollars in grants for various community programming and improvements to this room. We created the Safety Station C S O program in partnership with U C P D, which utilizes non-sworn officers, the C S Os, and stations them over, right now, at Little Acorn Park on Friday and Saturday nights for folks who don't quite feel safe making the trek home themselves. They can go ahead and ask a C S O, and the C S O will escort them there. We successfully advocated to save eleven public safety personnel positions from budget cuts during the County of Santa Barbara's budget process. Isla Vista Foot Patrol was going to be hit very hard during those cuts. We were really out front to take a position on it, and working in partnerships with our county supervisor, we were able to save those positions.
And for the record, we'll announce that Director Hedges came in at twelve sixteen. Great, go ahead.
Interrupting the entire process. Sorry about that.
You're good. It's okay. The last thing is that we've created the UCSB Public Policy Internship Program. It gives UCSB students paid internships in our local government. Current projects. Folks on the board are working on developing landlord tenant mediation services, and that is somewhat in partnership, my understanding, with associated students. We are creating the process to distribute the community program funds that we have received through much of our programming grants to different community groups, student organizations, et cetera. Also, working with law enforcement stakeholders to further engage the community. So, myself.
Spencer, could you go back one?
Yes.
Could you show the current project again, the second one?
Creating a process to distribute community program funds to community groups, student organizations, et cetera. So, one of the grants that we received through the Bauer Foundation has a large number, a large amount of funds available for programming of different sorts. And so, the thought was that for different organizations that are in the community that sort of have programming that they want to run, we could be a funding source, a portion of that grant money could be, ended up being distributed to them, to the folks who are already doing the work, instead of trying to sort of create our own.
Is that part of the twenty-three thousand, or is that in the issue?
That is, that is part of the twenty-three thousand, yes. And one of the things that I'll mention that was not on here in terms of district progress is that the twenty-three thousand is not our only funding. We also have a commitment from UC Santa Barbara to fund us for two hundred thousand dollars each year for seven years. This year, we have, I believe, gotten about, what is it, around sixty or seventy thousand of that that has been spent?
Committed.
Or committed to be spent. A lot of that money cannot be spent on sort of the operational side of local government, and that has presented a number of challenges to us throughout the first couple of months of operation.
Spencer, I presume you want some of that?
Of course.
The, when you say that it cannot be spent on the two hundred thousand a year from UCSB, that's a decision of UCSB. In other words, that's not any condition. If UCSB says we prefer to have those funds spent on that, they could do that.
When, we've been in the process of negotiation, and I think probably President Bertrand would like to better see this.
So, we've had a very collaborative process with UCSB, as far as the commitment that we have is for mutually agreed-upon services and programs and projects. And what that has been thus far is for public safety, our Isla Vista Safety Station program, also providing us funding for our office space as far as for the purpose of getting us off the ground and providing the internship program for UCSB students. So, with that, we've received about seventy thousand thus far. But with that remaining one hundred thirty thousand for this first year, that'll all be really service-based. So, looking into tenant mediation, looking into further public safety programs, community programming and facilities operations, which we'll get into some more, but the process has been very collaborative thus far, and it's been about identifying areas of mutual interest, and we've had great success with that. And Father John's been in all those discussions, as well as George Thurlow as well.
I have a question. When you say mutual interest, does that mean, like, between UCSB students kind of only and Isla Vista? Or have you noticed that that grant money also, like, there, they approve it going towards broader community things as well?
So, none of it goes, so it's for, it's to be spent for the whole community, because we're not an extension of the university. But with those, that negotiations that I'm describing, it's with the chancellor's office and the Community Services District on behalf of the residents of Isla Vista.
For example, with the two services we have right now, the C S O Safety Station, the C S Os are not just available to UCSB students, they're available to all. And then this room, of course, is a public space, is available to anyone as well. So, with that, I'll continue on a little bit. The Utility User Tax Ad-Hoc Committee was a committee that the Board of Directors formed. Myself, Ethan, and Father John make up the committee. The Board of Directors identified the need to pursue a utility user tax because of the lack of unrestricted revenue that's created difficulties for administration and operation. Right now, in our current state of sort of the administrative side of the district, which is sort of the boring, non-fun side of the district, but nonetheless very important to our operational things, we currently are spending around four thousand dollars to retain one staff person. That is not something that is sustainable. And this arrangement that we have is something that we are very excited to have gotten into place. However, because it is only a one-year contract and is meant to sort of get us off the ground in the beginning during the startup phase. The other need that the board identified was that Government Code six one two five oh C three mandates that the district be dissolved in two thousand twenty-three if a utility user tax is not levied. And so, this has sort of put a little bit of a sense of urgency in all of our minds to be able to get one of these on the ballot and convince the community that, you know, this is something that's worthwhile, and having the district is something that is worthwhile. I went over this a little bit, but what is the utility user tax? It's a percentage-based charge based on the consumption of utility services. It's a special tax, which means that in addition to the two-thirds approval for passage, it has to be levied for specific purposes. And so, the specific purposes that I talked about before, the eight services that we can provide are the specific services that Measure F was, uh, was, was on the ballot for. The services that, you know, we choose going forward can be, uh, that's something that we have flexibility in, but the committee thus far has favored sort of a broad approach so that we can make sure that the revenue is, like, you know, can be responded to different needs that come up in the community. It isn't just pigeonholed into one specific thing. The C S D has a legal authority to levy the U T on natural gas, water, garbage, sewage, sanitation, and electricity. The things that the committee is going to be making recommendations on are the title and the ballot question, the resolution and the ordinance to the Board of Supervisors requesting an election, the date of the election, and also the tax rate. And so, the ballot title and question has to be seventy-five words or less. It has to be followed by the words yes and no. It spells out what the revenue will be used for. And so, part of our motivation as the committee for wanting to get folks in the community together, gather input through both this event and through the survey drive that we're going to be launching, is to try to figure out what the services are that people are most excited about and people wanna see us most pursue, what some of the issues are in the community that people think are most pressing, and that we can make a dent in. And so, through that, we would be able to take the things that people most care about and put them directly into the ballot question. The example is the ballot question that we had for Measure F last time. If it looks a little confusing to you, then you would be in agreeance with the ad hoc committee. We have reviewed it and found that the current sort of wording of it was not put together sort of by anyone affiliated with the district. It was put together by the county council and sort of was a response to some of the weird legislative quirks. So, it may seem a little confusing. If the Isla Vista Community Services District is for it, shall utility user tax be imposed, et cetera, et cetera? And so, we're hoping to rework that and come up with something that is a little more straightforward and transparent with the voters to what the valid measure would be trying to do. The resolution and the ordinance is just the resolution requesting that the Board of Supervisors hold a special election or consolidate with an existing scheduled election. We'll talk a little bit about timing in a moment, because the committee has some thoughts on that as well. The date of the election options are either a special election, the gubernatorial primary election, or the gubernatorial general election. These are the ones that are happening in the near future. And so, in all of our discussions, one of the things that the committee has identified is that sort of when the, when the district, you know, being that we are a local government and that interest in local governments definitely fluctuates, but the services that we render nevertheless impact the community, it's easier to tell our story to the community through a, both a campaign and through a election when, you know, there are less things on the ballot for us to compete with, when we don't have, you know, a historic presidential election that is sort of taking away a lot of the attention that otherwise would have been on this, so that voters can focus on the question that is before them. And so, we have definitely been looking towards a, the gubernatorial primary election on June fifth as a possible option. And right now, with all of the work that we have done, we are completely on track to be able to do that, if that is what the community is most interested in. For rate options, we have to set the tax rate on each utility. Variants between utilities is okay. That was what was pursued in the past. The committee has talked a little bit about this, but doesn't really have, I think, a strong argument for why the utilities should be varied. We have a five, the five percent minimum and eight percent maximum on the rate that was applied to LAFCO does not apply to the Board of Directors. And so, theoretically, if the committee wanted to recommend a higher or lower tax than this is, the five percent and the eight percent, we could do that. The five percent and the eight percent taxes have both been, they've both been sort of plotted out in terms of what the five percent and the eight percent could allow for in the I V C S D plan for service that was submitted to LAFCO. And so, those are the main things that we've looked at thus far, with definitely more interest in being able to provide more services through more revenue in response to the community demand for so. So, the search priorities survey, I think this is the wrong PowerPoint that I have plugged up, but that is okay. So, that's, that's pretty much the conclusion of this presentation about what the ad hoc committee has been doing. I'd love to hear any other questions that you have before we sort of dive into the survey. It's been really great working with these three, and I think we've had a lot of great conversations, a lot of possibilities, and a lot of, I think, good things to come in terms of what we can do to get more dedicated funding sources to our community. One of the things that has been talked about a lot in terms of sort of the thirty thousand fee level just about Isla Vista is that a lot of folks identify that there's something sort of like the cycle of neglect that happens in Isla Vista. Something tragic will happen, tensions will boil over, and, you know, something, people will get hurt. And then, everyone sort of in the community puts a lot of attention into, well, what are we gonna do to solve I V? What are we gonna do to make sure that people can be safe when they are trying to go to school or go to their job without their lives? What are we gonna do to make this community livable? And then, as time goes on, sort of the interest in that project sort of wanes as, you know, just working with people, if it's difficult or interests don't align, and then it goes down to zero, and things start getting bad again. And it's just sort of this up and down cycle. One of the things that we really, I think the community all agreed was good about establishing an institution is that when you have an institution, it sort of acts, it both has the memory and it has the ability to provide resources into the future and to respond to these issues in a much quicker and more focused way than maybe other stakeholders in the community can. So, that's my little two cents, my editorial. With that, Ethan, if you have anything to add?
And I kinda wanna frame what our intention is with this kickoff for the public input process for a revenue measure. And that really is, we have this excellent opportunity to provide these eight services, these eight initial services that the community demanded and the state granted to us. And while we've made really good progress over the past, I guess, nine months roughly, our hands are somewhat tied as far as preventing us from reaching our full potential and full service level until we do pass this tax. And the last time that we did go to the voters, we had a lot of success. We didn't have quite enough, but there was a lot of momentum. I'm really excited for us to present this option to the voters coming up, but more excited about the community input and the, as far as what desires the community has for services. Thus far, we've really been able to move on public safety and now tenant mediation, but I think this is an excellent opportunity for us to look at our other services as well and see what can we do to best serve Isla Vista? What can we do to best improve the quality of life? And I think now if we wanna go through this survey briefly and then get into a discussion.
I will, I will hold up right now.
So, this survey that we have has been distributed this week through a university announcement, as well as announced at various different events. And what this is, is it walks through the different areas of service that we have and tries to prioritize what people would like to see us spending money on. I'm not seeing here. I'm gonna take a look for this in my mail-in box.
Can I make every statement? I've often been called into communities that have been impacted by crisis, trauma, violence, and so forth. And, and I've observed how many of those communities have attempted to restore that sort of homeostasis of peace that we all really want. We all really wanna have a sense that we're in a safe and secure community. And when that, that world gets rocked, like it has so often in Isla Vista, in the decades that I've been here, I've seen it happen all too many times. When it happens, we begin to ask those questions. We don't that much in between. And one of the unfortunate things about the last ballot was that it basically said, would you like to have a Community Service District? And then, would you like to have a tax was kind of what the second measure was. And it wasn't so much that it outlined what the benefits of it might be, what the, what this might mean for you as individual citizens. And so, now, we're kind of revisiting that process to a certain extent to find from the citizens of this community, what is it that you really desire? And wherever I've been where there's been crisis and trauma, we want that sense of safety at the front end. And that's why we have really front-loaded that question here in what we're doing. And, but those kinds of things, we have this great American motto, live free or die. Well, you know, you don't live for free. You know, I mean, and, and the freedom that you so desire and the safety that you so desire does cost. And the question becomes, how do we, how do we provide that? That which has not been very well provided for us in the past. To paraphrase Jackson Brown, old people look among you, it's there, your hopes must lie. And so, that's why we are looking to one another to, to chart that course together. And I am, just as, as an old, long-term resident, I am so excited to see that process beginning with strength. Thank you all for being here today.
Yeah. So, with that, I'll actually zoom in a little bit. Yes.
So, just to clarify, so the, so I remember these issues being pushed out when it was like when this tax was being publicized and whatnot and being pushed throughout I V. But just to be clear, I don't remember the ballot clearly, it was a few years ago. But, so none of these, none of these issues were listed on the actual ballot?
So, if I, I can go back and then pull this up for a moment. So, this, this language right here, shall the formation of Isla Vista Community Services District be ordered? That was the language that was on the ballot. This is exactly what you saw with this ballot title, the title on that question. And then, the same thing goes for Measure F, with the exception of the two-thirds thing. I just threw that on there.
So, there was no mention of improving safety, tenant mediation, public facilities?
It's gonna cost, but we're not gonna tell you what the benefits of the cost are gonna be. That's essentially what that does.
Yeah. And so, when that happened, I know, I think, a lot of us just personally were a little dissatisfied with that, but nevertheless, sort of that. Uh, but nevertheless, sort of that's, you know, what, it doesn't matter, we still gotta go out and make the case to everybody. And so, um, like I emphasized, we were not the ones that had any sort of mechanism to write this question. It was prepared through, uh, county council, um, and, uh, we're, we're hoping to have our own councils just as in preparing the current question. Yes, Jim?
So, uh, two quick things I wanna, one, one thing I think is just worth, worth noting as, as we have this discussion is that we had those, the eight powers that were mentioned, um, but, uh, we have an opportunity as we go back and now, um, set up the special tax and we're potentially talking about different services. So if there's something that you guys are particularly excited about, please bring it up and, uh, and, and see if we can figure out if it's compatible with the CSD law. We can try to figure out if it's compatible. And then in addition, I just wanna verify for sure, I'm pretty certain I understand, but, um, we aren't gonna have to go back to LAFCO, right? For, um, if we don't change services. If we do stay within our current service a lot, we will be able to just do this.
That's correct.
Awesome.
Okay, so this is the Better IB for you and me survey. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, you can pull it up on your phone by just going to tinyurl.com/betteriv. I can even put that right in. I can wait for folks who wanna pull it up to pull it up. But, um, this survey, uh, just to give a little bit of background, um, it was launched a number of days ago, um, both through a university announcement and, um, on district social media. Um, on top of that, in the coming, uh, weeks and days, um, we are going to be, uh, beginning, uh, the process of canvassing, uh, Isla Vista residents and having them, um, and folks who are interested to fill this out, um, and, uh, collecting that data by going to people where they live. Cause one of the things I mentioned earlier on is that, uh, just because, uh, not everyone in Isla Vista knows every single thing tit for tat that the community services district is doing, or that the county or that the university is doing. The things that, uh, we still decide on in the services we can provide still are things that utilize and still are things that, um, they, uh, that they should care about. And so, um, and that they have opinions on. So, um, in this survey, it collects, um, some data, your name, your email, uh, whether or not you wanna sign up for regular updates from the CSD. Uh, we promise you won't abuse that privilege, so I, I would check yes if I were you. How long have you lived in Isla Vista? Um, with a number of different options, um, scaling all the way to twenty plus. How would you describe yourself? Um, a UCSB student, a SBBCC student, a long-term homeowner, a long-term renter, um, a long-term renter who's a part of a family, uh, a recent college graduate, business owner, uh, landlord or property owner, uh, or a folk, someone who's houseless. And, um, going on from that, um, does Isla Vista have sufficient resources to ensure, uh, a high quality of life for residents? They have three options.
Hey Spencer?
Yes?
What was it? I think it's really biased when you put no rather than yes as the first response. Because when I see that irrespective of the question, since it's always yes, no, what I presume is that the person who's doing the poll is trying to get a no answer rather than a yes answer. And so that, I think it reduces the legitimacy of the poll. It just looks like it's biased.
Well, I, I can assure you that was not our intention, but I can also assure you that we can get that changed. That's a mistake, uh, so far as I can tell. I'm not sure if Google forms allows this yet, but we can look into it.
And I actually think that there may be a glitch, cause I just clicked on the link and for that question on my machine, it comes up first, don't know, then yes, and then no. And you got the same one there.
Yeah, don't know first, yeah.
And I got no, don't know, yes, so I guess it already is randomized.
I, I think Google forms randomizes.
You, you don't want it to look like you're looking for an answer in terms of, because people do check, are disproportionately likely to check the first answer.
I have a question too, cause I noticed like the ballot language is in the affirmative. Like, do you approve, uh, I just kind of had a question other than, or like, uh, just the way that the question itself is phrased. I was just wondering if that's like a law or...
I'll, I'll stop you because, uh, I'm happy to hear your question, but I just wanted to clarify, the ballot language is the previous ballot language and not the one that we're considering.
Oh, I know that.
Okay.
But I was just kind of wondering if that's just, uh, the standard of how, uh, the language is written?
I believe it is.
Okay, cause I, I just...
That'll be a great question for Ross.
Okay, thank you.
For people who don't know, Ross is our, um, legal counsel.
Okay, so yeah, we can definitely look into that, cause yeah, we, we don't wanna have the impression that this survey is slanted in one way or another. Um, then there's also a way for you to elaborate, sort of what are some of the common challenges that you face in Isla Vista through, uh, sort of a written answer. Uh, we wanted to have sort of, uh, answers to be able to qualify our quantitative, uh, side of the survey. You can select your top three priorities for Isla Vista service improvements. And, um, these, uh, services here are directly things that the community services district in particular, under current law, would be able to do. Uh, things to affect the public safety, um, things pertaining to infrastructure and lighting, uh, oversight over the planning and development process of new buildings, um, tenant landlord mediation services, um, infrastructure, things to sidewalks, um, parking, community facilities and programming, and, uh, enhanced representation and graffiti abatement slash public park. So with that, I guess I have to fill it out in order to get to the next page, so I'm just gonna go ahead and do that.
Is there an option to remain anonymous on this survey?
You know, it doesn't look like it, but we can look into that.
I was just wondering, cause maybe I would be like a little bit more honest if, I don't know.
I doubt that it actually verifies.
Right, right. Yeah, there definitely is not verification, so if you just wanna put, I don't know, nattyj at baseball.com, some made-up email, it's good. But we can look into that as well.
That's exactly my mind, email.
I literally just said the co- the first couple words.
Okay, so we can go over to the next page. So now we get into more specific Isla Vista issues, um, such as, uh, how's your experience been renting from Isla Vista landlords and property owners? Can you give an example of a positive or negative experience? Um, in addition to that, how often do you feel safe in Isla Vista? What have you found lacking in terms of public safety? How often do you or your customers struggle to find parking near your home or business? How do you think parking can be improved in Isla Vista? Do you notice graffiti around Isla Vista? What kind of public art would you like to see in our community? What sort of improvements can help beautify Isla Vista? Have you experienced the lack of community space, cultural events, and access to social services? Describe what would, what you would like to see more of in these areas in Isla Vista. Do you think Isla Vista is well or underlit? Where are, where can lighting be improved? What other infrastructural needs exist in Isla Vista? Do you think property and land development should occur more or less frequently? And if so, what kind do you support? Have there been decisions made about Isla Vista that you felt voiceless on? Give us an example and how you think the decision would have been better with local involvement. What are your favorite parts about Isla Vista? How can they be supported or improved to be even better? If you could change anything about Isla Vista, what would it be and in what way? And then, uh, just how did you hear about this survey? And so, I know I started just ran through all that at once just to do a little bit of an overview. But that's sort of what the survey contains. You are not required to fill it out now at all, um, but we wanted to give sort of an overview of what was on it. I was thinking, one of the things we could do, aside from opening it, opening it up to sort of talk about some of these questions and have a discussion with you all, um, is just go around, um, the room and, and hear sort of what thing you're most excited to give your feedback on as a part of this survey? Because there are a number of different things, um, but I'd love to hear sort of what part of the, uh, survey interests you the most. Or you, cause sometimes, you know, you fill out these surveys and you think, you know, well, these questions don't matter, but oh yeah, this one, you know, this is the thing I've been trying to tell them.
But beyond the survey, perhaps more just which one of our services are you most, and maybe if you wanna pull up that's, one of those beginning slides from the slideshow that outlines what we can do?
Yes. If I can find it. So there we are. So, uh, we, we'd love to open it up for that. If there's a service that you're interested, if there's something that you're excited in, letting us know about through the survey process, we'd, we'd love to hear it.
I, I think the two things that I'm most excited about are the municipal advisory council. I'd really like to see that happening and much more active, um, just, I, I think there's a lot of things that that is really the best means of discussing as a community. And then kind of, the other thing I'm, I'm interested in is parking restrictions. And I, I mean not creating more, but actually trying to lift some. Um, I'm living at Garden Court right now and finding parking there can be, like, a, around there can be really, really difficult. And I would really like to see, like, along, um, uh, Camino Corto, um, especially along the open spaces, if we could be making that able for people to park and starting to look at, um, perhaps along El Callejo. I feel like there's a lot of parking spots that we could open up. And that would be a big noticeable change for, for many people who don't normally come out to these things. And it would be showing, um, like tangible improvements that, um, I don't know, it's, it, it, don't just require funding, but require people organizing and advocating. And, and also I think it'd be really cool if kind of through that we could come up with a, a system for the county, um, where we could, um, I don't know, have the ability to say block off Del Pla to cars on like a Friday or Saturday night for an event. Those are, those are my big interests. Kind of a lot.
But on, on the parking side, I guess you'd say create more street-side parking?
Yeah, that I, I feel like there are a lot of s- spots, um, like, I, I don't believe there's a good reason why we don't have parking along El Callejo. Or, oh, uh, especially Camino Corto, but for much of El Callejo as well.
Lenny, you've been very involved with the community center, and that's coming online soon. Wanna talk on that a little bit?
Yeah, I, I, I think that trying to develop a community center in the heart of Isla Vista is something that's really important. And, um, if you want to have more of a downtown area and more of a downtown feel on Friday and Saturday nights, it seems to me that, um, its development is something that's really important. And I would say that going along with that is, is two other things. One is the street art, because part of the discussions in the past have been that there could be some street murals and things like that in the vicinity of the community center that I think would make it more of a hub. And then also, I think that the issue of, uh, alcohol licenses in Isla Vista, I know there's a discussion on this the other night, is that we don't have a chance to state what, but the, um, you know, from, from my standpoint, uh, it would make sense to have more. It's better for people to stay in Isla Vista than to have to go downtown. And if Isla Vista had increased municipal organization in the future, it needs to have more sales tax revenue, uh, circumstances. So I see the community center and more community art and a business district is all integrally connected.
I'm personally very passionate about the development end, so the area planning commission. Um, and if we could develop some kind of process to kind of court developers that we actually feel, understand the culture of Isla Vista, are not trying to gentrify Isla Vista. Um, I'm also very concerned about our houseless community and the way that, you know, there's been some, some challenges there with space, um, and interaction with our police force. Um, so just, again, gentrification is something very much on my mind when we're talking about development.
Awesome. And real quick, could you tell us more about the Eco Vista that you mentioned, just in brief?
Yeah, I don't wanna take up too much space on that. Um, I'd love to have a further conversation about it. But, um, I'm working with a team of students, um, and Professor John Forn in our sociology department. And, uh, the project has been incubating for some time now. And it's basically, if we could envision Isla Vista as a totally environmentally friendly and just community, how could we do it? And how could students help lead the charge on that? And again, so how can we create economic opportunities? How can we incentivize people to maybe not bring cars to IB? Kind of approaching it creatively and not having to go through the county as much as possible because there's wonderful collaborative opportunities, but then things also get dragged out, in my opinion, going that route as well. So we're building a website right now where we were actually, um, the reason I'm here is we were actually putting together a survey just like this, um, with a team of students, and we were planning on doing door-to-door outreach. So I would love to like, yeah, see what the results of this survey are and see if that can help inform our projects moving forward.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing. And then, um, so this past week, and one thing that I haven't even been, the, the board hasn't altered yet, but, um, myself and Jonathan Abud, our general manager, met with Deanna and, um, Daniel from IBTU, um, along with, um, Aaron Jones from AS. And we, uh, spoke about tenant mediation further and, uh, and Natalie was, uh, there as well on the phone. And we, uh, were able to, I think, really make some good progress as far as collaboration between our two organizations. And, um, I feel that tenant mediation is something that we already have, um, funding for, given that it's a priority of the university and a priority of our board. But, um, nonetheless, more resources will help us be more effective in that. Do you have anything to add on our...
Not specifically, yeah, but, uh, IBTU's been working for, uh, over many years, and certainly over the last year, on developing a, uh, tenant mediation program, really building off of all the conversations that we've all been having. And so, uh, there's been a lot of, um, researching about the right company, uh, or agency to work with to do it. And so we've been involved in that conversation. And now getting a chance to talk with the IBCSD about what that collaboration could look like. So it's really exciting to think about all the possibilities around women's rights work right now moving forward in the community.
And, um, one more thing, so obviously we have our, our Isla Vista Safety Station program up and running by expanding the CSO program, but I'm curious if anyone has any other specific public safety programming ideas that they have been thinking about that they'd like to see us work on? Michael?
What role could, uh, CSD play in the possible creation of, I don't know, it's like, uh, I, I know a lot of people in Isla Vista, this isn't so much my personal experience, but I know a lot of people in Isla Vista feel as though the Hope Patrol is in an alpha credit role. And we, citizenry actually pay for that service. And structurally, it makes no sense that the citizenry isn't in, it doesn't have a direct supervisory role in relation to the Hope Patrol. So that's, that's the question I have, which affects the public safety.
Sure.
And also, also, more importantly, um, how can we engender a culture of self-responsibility so that Hope Patrol doesn't have to get so many calls per service? That people aren't, aren't so pressed by, uh, the pressures of modern life and, um, the pressures of the university to act out?
Absolutely. And one of the reasons that we, uh, I guess one of the, the side reasons that we got the power to contract for additional police protection services was not just to increase the public safety services that are offered, but then also to bring Isla Vista representatives to the table with law enforcement, um, since we are contracting directly for their services. And as far as oversight goes for this agency, it's on the services that we contract for. But nonetheless, I think there's been conversations going on, which Spencer can speak about, about having the IBCSD, being one seat out at the table out of many of Isla Vista stakeholders, um, having greater collaboration with law enforcement.
Yeah, so, um, that is something that I've been, I've actually had a number of different people in the community from a number of different, I think, constituencies who have come to me and said, you know, we wanna do something that sort of looks like the Police Collaborative Board. And so I've been working with them. Uh, we don't have anything to present yet, but I think we've had some really good discussions about what that might look like. Um, one of the things that I always make sure to tell people is that if you're dissatisfied with one of the things, you know, a practice of the police or something that is going on that, um, they're doing, because occasionally it does come up. The, the number one, one of the reasons that we got created as a district was to provide more local oversight. And, uh, part of that local oversight, um, in the future could come from things like...
And part of that local oversight in the future could come from things like taking over the contracts of different agencies that are currently providing services. So in that sort of realm of possibility, because I, people will talk to me all the time, you know, well, what are we going to do about, you know, this thing that's going on or this agency is doing this and, you know, I don't necessarily agree with it. And unfortunately, a lot of the times I have to say, you know, we can advocate for it, but we don't have the power in the situation. Because we don't have the leverage, we don't have the money for that. And so that sort of, I think, brings it back full circle to what we're trying to do here is to try to. It's not just funding for the services and it's not just funding for, you know, the municipal advisory council or tenant landlord mediation services. But it's more leverage for the community to be able to affect the change that we want to see. And you know, maybe, because a lot of people will tell me things like, you know, well, I think the things that you guys are giving are great, but you know, what about this other thing that's going on? And so that's sort of, I guess, I don't know if it completely answers your question, but we can certainly talk afterwards sort of about what you'd be interested in seeing and dive deeper into the specifics of something like that.
I think it's interesting to look at the framing, oversight, collaboration, accountability. They produce different tones, much, much different tones. And so maybe we could look, strive for a mix of all of those.
Another job?
This, I've often heard this actually around the country in other communities that are working on similar interactions between law enforcement and community. What I have heard is that the stronger the community is, the safer the community will become. It's, it seems counterintuitive to think of the building of a community center of art programs and so forth as being aspects of public safety. But the reality of it is, is that the more sustainable our community becomes, the safer and the stronger it will be. Right now, we have been in a sense served by an alien police force because of the fact that we ourselves have not been a strong community. And that's a decades long problem that we've got to fix. And that's, that's the purpose of all of this. The more we build that infrastructure, the more power, the more strength we will have coming to the table to say, here's how we want to do it from here on out. That's my sense.
Deanna?
I would just add that as we've been having conversations about community policing over the last few years, I think that both on campus and off, one of the things that's been interesting has been the framework for that conversation around community policing. We've looked at the seven principles of community policing that were developed by COPS, the Department of Justice. And among those principles are things like language access, training, transparency, community engagement. A whole host of them that I think really can help to guide the work of having that discussion and unpacking what should this actually look like, what should accountability actually look like across all these different sectors of how the police are making their decisions and are actually executing them. And so I really encourage the, as a whole, Spencer and I talked about it and certainly with, by Sheva's office, there's been a lot of conversation about the police collaborative. So I know that the campus groups have adopted that as the principles that they're building their work off of. And so I think it might be a great opportunity to build off of those as well.
Yeah, my impression too is that Sheriff Brown's very, you know, willing to take input, I mean, compared to sheriffs. As they say, I mean, he's, he's very present at events and, you know, I mean, it's a big county and he has a lot of responsibilities. But I think that he's interested in it. One other issue on policing that I think also Merit's mentioned is that I've always been concerned that it seems to me, and I could be inaccurate on this, is that there's a disproportionate amount of policing resources and services that are provided like Monday through Friday, nine to five. You know, at times when it's kind of convenient for the people to be working rather than when the services are really needed. So it's not as much a question of the amount of services, but of how they're directed. And that's something that I think would be really interesting to find out information on.
Thank you for that.
We'll definitely look into that.
Anyone else?
Um, I had, like, okay, I feel like one thing that might be helpful, like an additional service to provide would be increased sanitation services because right now Isla Vista kind of depends on Adopt a Block. And Adopt a Block receives funding from Galileo West Sanitary District, like on a yearly basis. It's not necessarily like, it's not permanent and it's not something that will necessarily continue. And I think that that is something that like, kind of on the subject of creating a sustainable community, getting people to care about it. When a community like is, can be perceived in a way where it looks like people care, people will continue to care. So I think it's kind of the reason I came here today was to see if there are plans to like help with that in particular, although it relates to a lot of other things. But yeah, I feel like it doesn't exactly fit with any of the services, but I think it would be something cool to think about.
Well, it doesn't fit with the current services, it does fit with the CSD law. There is a potential service that we could add for doing solid waste. And so that's something that I know got brought up again for our visioning workshop that we can discuss it again. So I don't know if you're available, or actually, we should start your announced at visioning workshop.
Yeah, tomorrow afternoon, there will be a board retreat and for the first part of our retreat, we're in training. But for the second part, we're doing a board visioning and board workshop for the rest of the year and also planning for kind of. So it's, we want to plan for the short run, working with the resources that we currently have, but then also in the long run, working with future resources. So I'll read tomorrow the thing in the afternoon.
From what, what time did you say?
So it starts at 1:00 PM. Does anyone know what time the visioning will start?
I would say it's at five. I can, I can check that.
Two hours, five o'clock, I think it was, because we have a lot of trainings to do in the morning.
All right, so I thought it was one to three was the sexual harassment training and then starting at three was the?
Well, we have to also, we're going to touch on Brown Act ethics.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We should go over the agenda again, it's in our email.
Yes, I can, I'll pull that up.
So visioning is just for board?
No, forever.
It's all public, public. Which is awesome.
Where will we?
Upstairs.
It's actually agendas for this room, so it'll.
You're not moving it upstairs, anyone?
It was agendas for the community.
So I guess it's in here.
Cool.
Is this going to be kind of the only visioning thing that you're doing for the rest of the year?
No.
Okay.
Good.
The next five years, that's the, that's the one.
Um, with regard to the UUT, I think that this is a really great opportunity for all of us to kind of think about where we want the CSD to go. But I really want to hit on the aspect of bringing more people into the process itself. I think that people can't really feel the impact of change as much as when they're involved in it and also feel that relationship with the community and really do want this to blossom. And I think that if more people were involved in the process, I think it would be a much more successful campaign in general. So as part of that, I really want to make my mission bringing more people into this process, learn more about it. Because like as, your PowerPoint made it seem so simple and tied a bow on top. But me trying to explain it to someone at their door after I just knocked on it, I'm like stumbling over my own words. And I really want people to understand it simply and be as committed to it as we are. So that's what my kind of goal out of all of this is, bringing more people in. And I think it's so bold, I'm sorry, I forget your, I forgot your name.
Oh, Gordon.
Gordon, thank you so much for coming, for wanting me involved, like that's so cool. And I want more people to do that and I don't want these meetings because everyone, I've seen so many familiar faces. I don't want this to be something that creates an insider outsider kind of vibe. I want everyone to be able to, so that's my goal for today.
And with that, I will also say that I appreciate the compliment on the PowerPoint, but this PowerPoint is the thing that I think a lot of us just hate about government. So and you know, it's something that we sort of have to do just as a boilerplate to make sure that we're hitting all the points. And so that people can't come in and sort of poke their finger in our eye and say, well, why didn't you do that or why didn't you talk about this? But we, we want to sort of strive to be a different kind of government in that sense. Where we are sort of, you know, opening ourselves up to the community and hearing what folks have to say in a more open process than just, you know, us talking at you. So you know, with, with that, like I said, any sort of input that you have, any issues that you think exist in Isla Vista that you think that could be addressed, we'd love to hear them.
Totally, and one more thing that I want to touch on real quick is just really a spirit of efficiency that we've kept in mind as far as keeping our administrative costs as low as possible so that we can put the maximum amount of money towards services. We're probably the only special district board in the state of California that doesn't accept money for our service at this time. So we're saving a lot of money there. We've been able to retain top notch legal counsel at an extremely discounted rate. That has made it very, very possible for us to continue to operate in a way that serves the public the best. We've been able to get high quality management for a very small stipend. And everything that we've done, it's kind of been to keep the administrative costs as low as possible. And going forward, when we do have more revenue, we'll have to put more of it behind administration. But I still see us moving forward in a way that keeps administration lean so that we can really focus on getting as much money as possible to more public safety services, more community improvements. I think that's, that's been our operating spirit in the community.
One of my neighbors from one of the hostile tribes at the west of our neighborhood said to me that this board was amateurs. And I said, well, that's wonderful, thank you very much, because amateur means someone who does it for love, not someone who does it for money. Someone who does it for money is a mercenary, someone who does it for love is an amateur. I am proud to be a member of an amateur board.
Deanna?
I was going to just follow up, I probably sound like a broken record for folks that know me, but in terms of the outreach and really supporting a really well thought out outreach for the, you know, kind of more marginalized members of the community. But also I met with Jonathan over the week, over the summer to talk about the translation of the IBCSD website, which I know isn't run by the IBCSD still. But we went through it in a lot of detail about kind of how we could support the translation of that. And I would love to see that move forward because it's, you know, trying to really take into account the lack of funding for it. Looking, you know, we looked at strategies to keep that very doable. So that's kind of low hanging fruit, at least for the website that's already there.
Translation services for me are one of the top priorities and a way to bring in all members of the community. And I think it's, it's a little bit unfortunate we're unable to provide that at this time. But I think that that also pulls in like a much larger community aspect in getting that off the ground. But I definitely think that that's super important and very, very valid. And especially when we're talking about the UUT, this is absolutely going to affect everyone in Isla Vista's lives. So I think it's very important that everyone has access to the information.
And we've also talked about ways to scale it, right? So I mean, during the AB3 meetings, there's a lot of discussion about if you can't fund a full interpreting and translation, then what are the ways to kind of do that, right? To do the website, and we went through and we identified like what are the evergreen pages of the website so they don't require changes? You know, it's a pretty shallow website in terms of there isn't tons and tons of content yet. So easy to translate it without a lot of upkeep to it. And then we talked about for the agendas, right, being able to translate those and the limits. But then for anything that was more detailed, like reports, making an offer, right, that can be translated, you know, as needed. So I think that there's lots of creative ways to think about how to scale that so that it begins to provide some of that for the community.
Absolutely.
You know, I, I just wanted to follow up your comments on legality. And I think that's a really important point to mention and emphasize because there will be a campaign against this proposal again in terms of the same forces that were against it last time are going to be against it this time. And they don't want to see an Isla Vista CSD existing in perpetuity. And their view is if they can defeat it, you know, several times, that then it'll never, it'll go out of existence. So my feeling is, is that their biggest argument was, it's all just going to go to staff salaries. It's all just going to be for a big bureaucracy, blah, blah, blah. In terms of that you really want to emphasize we're service oriented, these are the services we're providing. And I do want to say too that I think you would be wise to consider a rate less than eight percent. Because I think that taxes are always something that people have a hard time voting for. I think an eight percent utility users tax struck people as, that's a lot. And particularly lower socioeconomic people not withstand the potential for an exception. But I, I think that six percent would be better to go with, try to get it, make sure that the district is in place and then go back in the future for another percent or two. But I, I think you have to look at it from a political standpoint as well.
I think that along those lines, I don't know, I think that the percent and the six percent, that's obviously something to talk about. But I think that it's important too that this year we make sure, for me, eight percent of my utilities is so abstract. And I need people to know what that is and be able to calculate that. And that's something that I think that I really want to hammer on this year is I want you to be able to actually calculate it yourself. Like I want it to be easy, I want it to be accessible, I want it to be online, you can type in how much your utilities cost and ta-da, that's how much it'll be a month. So it gives us some kind of understanding of the actual cost. Because eight percent for me, like, it sounds like so much, you know, if you think about it. And then I'm like, I consume this much electricity, I consume that much of this, so I think it'll be interesting.
But I'll also say that we did have, there was a very solid community message last time, which is for the majority of Isla Vista residents, it's between five and $10 a month, more so on the $5 side. And also, I mean, I, as far as talking about those community groups that opposed it last time, I'm hopeful that maybe this time we can work more collaboratively and bring them into the fold. Because I think we do have a lot of, a lot of common interest and concern and hopefully pass for the community. But I'll also say that I don't think that it was opposed because of the, the amount of the rate. I, I, it may have been that way, but I don't, I don't think that the property owners or any other opponents were so opposed to that it was eight percent and not five, but.
And the, the one thing that was once again not enumerated at that time was what are you going to get for it? You know, it was just, here's what you're going to pay. It wasn't, here's what you're going to receive for that pay. And I think once that list is populated, it makes a very different question.
Absolutely. Jacob Memling?
Yeah, kind of going off what Father Don said that, and my recollection, a big struggle of it was, I don't know, a I, I feel like in some ways there hasn't been a clear articulation of what like we as a community can now do with, with these services. That like having been part of the whole AB3 process of hammering out, like having these legal rights to do stuff. Like, okay, great, we have this thing, but there hasn't been like a, a pretty clear vision of, of where we as a community go with this and what we can do with it. It's been kind of these, these individual services which, which can be really useful, but, but it's hard to take like an individual service and relate it to like, I don't know, a, a vision and a direction for a community. And in my eyes, that's the, the biggest thing that we're going to struggle with moving forward with this.
Plus, Heather?
I just want to go back to the possibility of, of having a lower tax. Because you know, when I would go door to door and talk to people about how much it would cost per person and say even like, it would probably be about $5 per person. Most people were like, wow, that's a lot of money considering that they probably pay between, you know, $30 to $40 a month. Adding $5 to that is like actually kind of a lot of money. So I think that there, that I agree with you, that the people that were protesting this, it wasn't about how much it costs. It was about having power over them. But I think that having a lower tax might be easier to just say, well, it's not even that much money, as sort of an example. But I understand, obviously, there's a need for it to be, you know, more to be able to support the district. But it honestly might be easier to pass if it's less.
I think it's hard though too, though, moving forward, if we were to, let's say it's more palatable at a lower number now. And then a couple of years we realize, look, we still can't provide these services, we still don't have the money. And we say, oh, let's move it up to eight percent now with the greedy government. Now we're that greedy government who wants to take the rest of your money. As opposed to saying, this is what we need in order to provide accurate service, appropriate services for the community. I think it would be easier to do it that way. You think it would? Yeah.
I, although also, I mean, if you move it, so if you say you move it to six percent, I don't think we should get too bogged down in this. You know, then we're moving the range from like, so the five to $10, it'll be like $3.50 to $8. You know, that still seems kind of like the same, the same range. And then, yeah, then we are having to go back and go through this entire process and spend time with the board to go back.
And then, yeah, then we are having to go back and go through this entire process and spend time with the board to go back and get one or two percent. And I feel like that takes place over years and years.
All it is is like a pack of gum, you know, in between eight percent and six percent is like, yeah, it's a, it's a pack of gum. So I don't know, like, where that scale kind of lays.
Uh, Jay.
Not sure if I'm, I I would actually advocate for the less than eight percent tax, but the one, one comment I'll make is on that notion of trying to go back later and asking for more. If you are able to show with a smaller amount of money that you can accomplish something greater, that's, which is essentially what we're doing right now.
Right, right.
I mean, the premise of why we're even bothering to exist without having a tax is, well, maybe if we can just get some grants and we can, we can work with university, we can show that we can do great things, and then you'll you'll be willing to give us more money to do more great things. And and you can imagine a scenario where if we went and got a four percent tax, that later we could then say, look what we did with the four percent tax. Imagine what we could do with an eight percent tax. But I I'm still not certain, I'm advocating for it because based upon the initial feasibility, the studies and everything, it's just.
I I, I think it it's it's a question that merits lots of discussion because it is the fundamental question. And to some extent, it's an empirical question. It's not a question of what people want, it's a question of what would people vote for. And for what it's worth, Chuck Eckert strongly advocated before LAFCO for an eight percent tax because he thought that would be the easiest to defeat in terms of, I mean, you remember that, in terms of, it's something that, and and that, my guess is would be what he will do again, is he'll say, yeah, go for an eight percent tax because people here may not think that it's it's, it makes a difference, but he thinks it makes a difference. I I think that it's gonna be, there isn't gonna be a hundred thousand dollars being spent on a yes on CSI V CSD initiated at the same time as it. And, um, you know, who's to say what the situation in the economy will be at that point in time? You know, I I think there, there ought to be a poll polling is, you know, the the question. And it's something that, um, and it doesn't matter what the real cost is of five to ten dollars. I myself wrote in The Independent it was five to ten dollars. Not a question of what the analysis is. The opponents of it are gonna say, it's a five hundred dollar a year increase, it's sixty dollars a month. The point is, it's all gonna be tossed around in terms of, so that the higher the percentage is, it's something that, um, eight percent's a lot. You know, I mean, the point is, it's a lot.
I hate to admit it, but I've actually studied the, uh, the psychology of, of sales. Why do people make decisions? Why do they choose to buy one thing rather than to buy another thing? One thing that's very critical that comes out of that kind of research is that people don't buy just because of a list of features. They buy for a list of the benefits that they're personally gonna get from it. You know, when we just talk in the abstract about, you know, safety and so forth, it has to translate somehow to what that individual voter sees. And to get to that point, we have to ask the questions of them, what do you want? We need to listen to the people even more than we have so far. And when we listen to the people, when the people know we are listening to them, that's when they will vote to fund us. And, uh, so that's why I hope we get this done.
I think that was an excellent point, and I think especially in our community, you know, a lot of us are are really obsessing over the big picture right now. Climate change, the economy, all of these things are really stressing us out. So five to ten dollars, that's too much for me. If we take a look at the community choice energy kind of conversation that's been going on, how could we maybe adopt that for an Ila Vista kind of vision? How could we save our community money by working with landlords to bring more solar power to Ivy and maybe charge them a small amount? So they're getting something and it's an exciting, larger vision that we can maybe feed into as well.
Well, and I will piggyback off by that, off of that by saying that while the committee is particularly focused on UUT, I'm sure I think all of us on the board have thought a lot about what the other ways that we can bring revenue into the district are that are irrespective of the UUT. And so that that point is very much noted and appreciated. Michael and, uh.
A couple things. Um, I wanted to build off of Jessica and Jacob's remarks on visioning. I I feel like the, um, the way the survey is structured and the way that the CSD is structured based on the eight powers is a real constraint here. It it, um, as Jacob was saying, it seems like, um, there's this motley collection of specific powers, and it's hard to see a vision for how, um, Ila Vista is going to become, um, a more vital, more exciting, more inspiring place from that. And I don't have an easy answer for that, but somehow I think that if you can, if the CSD can couch the survey and couch all its, I think, sincere outreach efforts in a, in a vision, in 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 a, in a process that solicits a larger vision, that would be really sweet. I I really am inspired by, uh, the work that Jessica is undertaking with, uh, John, her team and the John Horant class. I think they might, um, be big players in this as well. But, but, um, no, it's, it's hard, it's gonna be hard for it to be grabbed by, um, the individual points on the survey. And we need a, a way to make a more coherent vision of the Ila Vista that we, that we want. And we wanna draw people out for their vision. If if people are drawn out in that way, then a lot of the specifics are gonna be really obvious.
Right. And and one more thing that I'll add is, while I think the work of the Ila Vista Community Services District is very important and crucial for Ivy, we are a piece of the puzzle. And there's also beauty in that because it's a spirit of collaboration. We have the Ila Vista Recreation and Park District, we have Associated Students, we have the County of Santa Barbara. And all of us working together as government and service providers to to do what we can, but then also working with the business community and also working with the schools. And, um, I think that's something we have to recognize in this too, that we, we do have these eight services and these eight powers that the voters and constituents of Ila Vista presented and pushed for and achieved. But, um, we are not the the panacea for everything Ila Vista. We're, we're happy to do all that we can and and push to do more, but, um, we are working with a lot of stakeholders for that, uh, that broader, broader vision.
Um, one, I feel like this might be repetitive of what everyone else is saying, but I feel like people are really gravitated to things where they feel like there's a connection to their identity as part of it. And I think that, like, like listing the particular services provided, like, it is, it's like the first step. But I also think to get it to be more of a hook and something that people like care about and feel excited about and like want to engage with, it also has to be something that they can, like, relate to, which, um, it, it's interesting because y'all are trying to, like, do particular services, but that also goes into, like, marketing it a type of way. But I think that in order to do one, you kind of have to do the other. And I don't know how, but I think it is an important point to consider.
So, Jay.
This is kind of, I don't know, different than a lot of the, uh, that I think one of the, the best uses of of this money would really be more administration. That that sounds kind of odd, but I don't know, if if we could then, like, as a community, be funding more people to, like, after they graduate, stick around, being full-time act, like, activists in organizing stuff, most of the actual money for the services that we wanna do stuff is gonna need to come from grants anyway.
Yeah.
That the, like, the, the amount of money this is talking about isn't going to be able to solve all the issues of lighting or o- or other things. It can help, but, um, I I'd kind of, on on some level, rather see a couple of recent grads sticking around, working full-time on Ila Vista issues mu- much like Deanna, um, that it, like, I I think that would, having three more Deannas would be one of the best bangs for our buck we would possibly have.
We would have to do it.
And that it could also then be starting to get at one of the big problems with Ila Vista and why so many things can be slow, so slow to happen, is that, um, we are a very transient community and it's hard to get people to stick around af- after graduating. And that this institution could be part of the means by which we get even just a, a handful of people sticking around more, that it would slow the the loss of of kind of institutional knowledge that gets built up and dissipated so consistently. And that, um, I don't know, I I just, I I see a lot of these services as as very important and needed, but but very slow to becoming to fruition, um, largely because of of money and that it also then leaving people with a lack of a clear vision for it. And I I see a lot more through a municipal advisory council and and having, I don't know, more staff and, um, people whose job it is to be organizing around Ila Vista issues, um, that's, that's kind of my vision for, for the district.
Just to follow directly up on that, has there been more discussion about the grant writer position and and any thoughts about funding that? Or or that's still kind of somewhere in the radar, radar?
Um, yes, so that's right now part of Jonathan's duty. Um, and Jonathan has gotten us all the grants that we've received so far, so twenty-three thousand on that front, not counting the money we've received from the supervisor's office or money for our office space. But, um, but going forward, I mean, when we can increase that position, when we can increase the general manager, who is not just responsible for administration, but also cir- overseeing services and, uh, working on community programming, that that will have more resources to, uh, go after grants as well.
And I just wanna say I appreciate your comments on that because administration isn't sexy by any means and, um, not always the most fun thing to say that you think money shouldn't go towards. But I think it's worth noting, especially because, um, our organization right now as, you know, a one staff member is sort of like a baby in a sense. And, um, in order for that to grow and to sort of be able to grow into adulthood, it's gonna need to become, uh, an organization that has, uh, more dedicated staff to it, that are working more hours, that are doing those things. And then, once we're able to to show that we have all that sort of administrative stuff down, then we have such a better argument to do some of the things that I was talking about earlier. One of the, uh, original things that was interesting about the CSD's powers, which was the ability to take over various contracts that exist already at county government and bring them closer to the people here in Ila Vista, so that the people here will have the leverage over those things, whether it's policing, whether it's, I know one of the things Director Freeman has talked about in the past is, uh, trash and sanitation. We, we, right now, if we wanna see changes in that, gotta go and, you know, talk to our county supervisor and the sheriff or whoever sits in charge of it, whichever department head, the county is in charge of it, and hope that they like our idea and that they'll, you know, hear it out enough to actually make some change happen. But if we were the ones that were holding the strings on a contract like that, then we would have the true power over it. And in order to get to that place, we are gonna need more staff, so, um, yeah, that's my two cents.
Awesome. And I think this has been a great discussion as far as kind of kicking off, um, the outreach process for, um, really finding out what the community desires are and how they've changed and progressed since we initially, uh, developed this structure for funding and ultimately what we'll wanna pursue, uh, to provide the best service that we can. Um, so are there any other comments or questions before we, we do adjourn?
Um, sorry, I was just taking in everyone's comments. Um, I think a huge thing that would help the CSD is to establish its continuity and, like, its publicity and how it's known from students especially, is, um, a huge thing is, a lot of my friends were transferring and they were asking me, should I go to Berkeley or UCSB? And they were thinking Berkeley because a lot of my friends are poly sci-like people because it has the reputation of being a very global campus. And I told them, no, like, UCSB is where students actually have a hand in every single aspect of, like, government establishment. The CSD came out of, like, as members of Associated Students. And I was, um, talking with Hugh briefly just, just now about how some students don't see themselves as Ila Vista's. And the people involved in this are people that see themselves as, like, Ila Vista's and, like, feel that community. And then you have, like, um, the, um, older members of community, business owners, um, children, and like, there's this huge divide. And I think having, like, guest lecture, um, in, at UCSB would be a huge thing 'cause then poly sci students will see, like, I'm not only at a university that, like, I'm learning at, I'm at a university where I can apply everything I'm learning, like, right outside my door. And, like, I can be a part of that, so that would establish the continuity. And if the university were to advertise Ila Vista as a place where, um, students established, like, government here, like, that's a huge thing too. Like, not just that we're this beautiful beach town, we're this beautiful project of people creating, like, government and figuring out everything and students collaborating with, like, every aspect of community. So I think that with, like, the charge of eight percent, bringing it back to other comments, um, students are a huge part of this population and so they would be paying for a lot of it. And, like, it's not necessarily in the number, it's how they feel about it. And some people are just like, I just don't know what this is going towards. So, like, just like, it's a lot of moving pieces, but I think that really bringing students into the fold and having them feel that same passion that other people who've been here for a while is super important. Seeing the CSD is like an aspect of, like, student action.
Great point. Thank you, Michelle. Hugh?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of echo some of what Kristen said already in that, um, students, this, this, this concept that we talk about in terms of Ila Vista community does not resonate with students whatsoever. The students simply don't see themselves as Ila Vista's and see, they see themselves as students who just happen to live in Ila Vista, which is a different concept, especially when you're promoting this, um, utility tax moving forward, that's something that's centered around Ila Vista's, I think. Having something that really resonates with students moving forward, that's what Kristen alluded to, would be really helpful. Um, so, yeah.
Thanks, Father Joe.
I've often said that there are dissertations waiting to be written on the experiences that we're having here right now. And, uh, Ila Vista for decades has been a, a, a place, a social laboratory in many ways. And, um, it's underwritten on, you know, when you go through the literature. And, um, I think that notion needs to be floated in those departments that are relevant, poly sci, anthropology, sociology and so forth. Art, for crying out loud. I mean, this, this is a community worth, this, there's ferment here. This is a lively place. This is a place worth staying in. I am glad I stayed in Ila Vista after I came here in the mid-sixties. I'm glad I stayed here. I'm glad I raised my family here. I am an Orthodox priest. There's no, there's no scandal involved, I wanted to make that very clear. We did raise our family here and and our, our, our son graduated from here, as I did. And we had a granddaughter that almost went here, but ended up going to Westmont because she got a better scholarship there. But, um, uh, there are things to make a life of, uh, in this place. This isn't just party central. This is a place to build a life.
I'm wondering if you all have thoughts about what is some of the ways in which it resonates, that that perspective about Ivy be, you know, being or not being Ila Vista's, that that would resonate more for students? Any thoughts?
A lot of students, oh, sorry, should you do that?
No, no, go ahead, I should.
A lot of students don't even know the history of activism, like, I would think.
Yeah, yeah.
Running down is a huge thing. Like, the National Guard was called in, there was like a bunch of stuff that happened in Hues Park. I wrote a history book about it for you, so that's why I know about it. And I was just shocked and I, and it got me so excited. And then the concept of this CSD was literally like former AS physicians decided to get together and, like, work with people and write this bill, and now it's here. That's like huge for me because seeing that as a student in my time here, that, like, not only am I gonna be participating in programs, like, I can create, like, change, like, tangible change within the four years that I'm here. So that's something that really resonates with me. And then I tell people who want to come to UCSB is that if you're interested in politics, you will have a huge hand in politics. You won't just be witness to it.
And I guess adding on to that, um, everything that was listed on there resonates with students, all the services that are being provided. It's how you tie that to the student educational experience as promoting that. So if I just see that, you know, when I'm looking at that as, you know, part of the Ila Vista community experience, it resonates a lot differently because it's something that's for older people, adults, you know, that have to worry about, you know, sewage or public safety or, you know, utility, you know, a utility is an example, this is not something that really homes in. You've tied it up to, like, the student educational experience, such as, like, you know, parking makes it easier for you to get your classes, et cetera, et cetera, you know, stuff like that, and so.
But Shava, as someone who really is that tie between the students and the community within your position, what do you think?
what do you think could be a way to like brand these, um, these services directly to the students?
Well, I mean, I agree with what was said earlier where, at the end of the day, students want to know how it's going to benefit their daily lives. They want to know how their daily lives are gonna get better, not just throughout the year, but like today, this is what's gonna happen because of the CSD. And I think that listing the services on the ta- on the ballot isn't necessarily gonna do anything because nobody knows what a municipal advisory committee is. But if you can list something that it will do for students daily, I think that would be extremely beneficial. And then the students would see the benefit in having the CSD. Because, you know, most students don't know what the CSD is and students that do don't necessarily know why we even need it. And I think that by clarifying how their lives will get that much better would actually, you know, improve the way we see voter patterns and people would actually like the CSD and, you know.
Right. And real quick, we should also clarify that, um, while we're going over the, the legal definitions of services here, um, our outreach and what really got eighty-seven percent of the voters of Isla Vista to call for a CSD was exactly what we're talking about here, talking about how it'll make the everyday lives of Isavistans better so that our friends aren't having unjust battles with their landlords, so that family members of ours don't get assaulted in the streets of Isla Vista.
So you can park on your own block.
Yeah, so that we have more cultural programming. And I think that relatable, um, message will be the same, I mean, the, the same primary focus. Obviously, we've evolved as a community in terms of, of needs, but top priority of relating to people.
Um, I think one thing that could be rallied more effectively in this campaign is the concept of identity. I'm actually in an interest group class right now, like one thing we're learning is like how identity fuels action through like values and emotions that people feel. And that's one thing that I feel Isla Vista has so much of, is this concept of, oh, I live in Ivy, I love Ivy. It's because we're so unique compared to any other college campus in California or even the nation. Um, and I feel like that's one thing a lot of students take a huge amount of pride in, so this concept of Isavistans, I think that should be pushed a lot because people feel a strong identity and connection with that. Um, especially just me and the people I know, like, or people I talk to around, like, I love taking pride that I live in Ivy and I go to UCSB and I'm a galcho. And I feel like that's something that could be fueled in the campaign for this utility tax coming up in June, hopefully. Um, that could be much more pushed to unite like a common identity community to back it.
I just wanted to speak to, um, connecting students to the experience of Isla Vista through their educational experience. Um, so this summer, I actually, um, helped to teach with John Foran in his class. It was what's wrong with the world and how do we fix it? And we made it an Isla Vista-focused project. And we also did another project in spring quarter, um, called The World in, and it, the class was called The World in 2050. And we did another project called Isla Vista in 2050. So I have a flash drag with a bunch of student projects that we've been analyzing. And, um, I was actually taking students out in different clusters into Ivy to go visit the Isavistin community bike shop, um, visit the community gardens and talk about this very radical, amazing history that Ivy has. And that changed a lot of students' perspectives because we started off by saying, so what do you think of, when you think of Ivy? They're like, parties, cool new people, trash, um, noise and not that great food. Like, those kinds of negative things are mixed in with really positive like elements of community, of freedom, of exploration and innovation. So I, I think like really embedding this into like certain classroom experiences is really important moving forward. And I'm more than happy to share the wealth of perspectives and information that I've been mining, so, yeah.
So, so actually in the spring, um, the EVPLA position teaches a class on Isla Vista. Um, and I think that there's some issues with, you know, it happening this year with the poly sci department. So I'm trying to sort of just revive the class and tr- sort of get a whole new approach to it and kind of change it a bit to, in order for it to kind of continue. So I'd love to talk with you.
Yeah, yeah. Wanted to talk to you about your history that you've been working on.
An idea I've had for a little while that I feel like connects with, with really a lot of what we're talking about here is, I would really love to see sometime in spring, a, um, a festival or really like a street party where we block off Del Playa. We have lights and amplified music and places where people can, can legally drink. And then we also have kind of, I don't know, like stands and information and art that's talking about all of this stuff, that's explaining some of the things that the CSD is, is, is try, and other institutions in Ivy are trying to do, that like you come out because it's fun and it's the best party that's happening in Ivy that night. And it just has all of this stuff that has you begin the conversation of, of what we're, we're doing, gives you access to how you can get more, more involved with things that you can, you connect with. And, um, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't want to see it as like another event that the people that are organizing it show up to and bring some of their friends like in, in People's Park, uh, like those, those are great. We've had a lot of those, but, um, like I, I really think also kind of shutting down the street would also be this projection of this power that we have, um, as a community. And that trying to build that up, um, is really integral to, to all of this. It's like, we, we need to have a discussion of not just what do we want or what are our needs or what interests students, but what power do we have and how can we build that up?
Seems like one of the themes that goes around a lot is this opportunity that we have, right? That we are asset-rich community, right? We have so many resources, so much work that's gone in, that question of, uh, how did we transfer that, right? And pass it over and, and make it long. I think, I imagine Jacob, one of the reasons why the MAC is so interesting to you is because it provides that, that moment and that opportunity to address these overarching issues, right? That don't have one space necessarily in a power. It's more about maximizing collaborations and maximizing opportunities for the work to happen. So I want to just put it out there, and I don't know that it belongs within the CSD, but I think that this idea that I've heard from the time I got here, I've thought about it a lot, around this idea of a Center for Community Engagement, right? That would really be able to hold all the different projects that are happening, the amazing work that's going on, and allow people to pull from it, you know? Allow the community to be nourished by more faculty, you know, visiting lecturers, those kinds of things. Then also allow a place for students to do their projects, to understand where that information is coming from, carry those forward, find ways in which we're not having ten thousand different events that are, you know, are or not well-attended, but, you know, being able to combine that and make it more effective and maximizing the money that we're investing in the community. And so just a thought about other ways that I think all of these disparate pieces of work that we're doing need to be connected and, and however the CSD can be part of that, I think would be such a great benefit because we are so asset-rich already, we just have to tie it together more.
Michael?
I'd like to speak to, uh, Jacob's remark. Uh, I, I think we would really benefit by taking a page from the City Repair Project in Portland. And when we have block parties, leave something concrete, leave something beautiful behind that people can point to and say, you know, hey, we helped build that, you know, that, that's a part of our community that we're gonna safeguard. We're, you know, we're gonna make sure, you know, that doesn't get tagged, you know? We're gonna make sure that that gets built on, maybe more functions get built around that.
I couldn't agree more, we've got like little hand-printed paintings. And me and all my housemates like make a priority to go out there and put our hands on it. And my family came to visit me, first thing that I wanted to show them for some reason was like my handprint on this wall, which is like, you know, you think about it, it's literally just a paint on my fingers. But like, it, I, really made me feel a sense of community. And I think that that's really important, especially when we're talking about one of the services as graffiti abatement and how public beautiful art pieces can, um, can avoid that kind of defacement.
I also think that in Ivy and like just with it being a college town, there's a huge lack of institutional memory in like pretty much every organization I've been a part of. So I feel like, I'm assuming people probably keep repeating mistakes. And it's something that like I've been trying to think of a solution to, I don't really know if there is one. But I think that like overall, community engagement, like being able to physically see the history through things like art and being like, oh wow, they did that in this state. And like at Cogia, they have that picture of the bank burning, like, things like that kind of build curiosity and like pride in where you are.
I could not agree more with that comment. And I'm sure, I see Deanna smiling as well.
And a reactive way, right? That Center for Community Engagement is such an active way of, of doing that, it's right there.
I think another big part of it too, when we're talking about, we talk a lot about communities and we talk about like specific areas of the community, such as like the houseless community or like specific marginalized communities or families that then are, um, within Isla Vista. But I think something that we really can't forget is that each of these groups are made up of individuals that have individual preferences and individual, um, thoughts and objectives. So I think that a big part of this too, as much as I want to do outreach to communities, I want to keep in mind that like the voice of maybe one part of that community does not represent everyone. So I really want to try and keep that in mind moving forward and make sure that we're trying to cover all of our bases in speaking. I'm, I really want to speak to everybody in Ivy, but I don't think that's possible, but I could.
I just want to say one other thought about, um, what Kristen was saying about, both of you, about applied, um, education in the community. There's a Carnegie designation, uh, you know, that they use for the best colleges. One of those designations is a, is a elected designation for community engagement. And there is an organization, a national organization called Campus, Campus Compact. They have state-level, um, chapters as well. And, and part of what they do, so their whole thing is how do you engage, you know, how do you do community engagement work? And one thread of what they do is prepare universities and communities to be, to, to gain that designation. So it's a very like, um, evaluation and, and assessment-based program. But it would be something to consider that if the university had all of a sudden this designation that it is a leader in the nation around community engagement and all what that means, I think would be a really interesting way to also make this be a place that attracts students who are thinking about that kind of, of a relationship.
Sorry, I'm late, y'all, but just to follow up on that, uh, just so you know, the university actually used to be members of Ca- uh, uh, California Campus Compact. Uh, it's a designation that goes through the chancellor's office. And so there, we have some documentation on that and that would perhaps be a good opportunity now to kind of bring that back and invite the campus to, particularly with the realities going on in Isla Vista to become a membership.
Yeah, eleven thousand a year, just checking.
California Campus Compact.
Eleven thousand.
For membership, yeah. The, uh, national website, the Campus Compact, everyone has great information, really, really resource-rich around community engagement. And the conference is coming up in March, by the way.
I was kind of curious to know, um, how, so we've talked a lot about student outreach. I was kind of wondering about the rest of Isla Vista outreach and like how y'all have been doing that, how it's been going?
Yeah, so, um, every month we're at the Isla Vista Community Network meeting, which is a roundtable of primarily service providers, local nonprofits, and then government agencies. And within that, there's the Isavistin Youth Projects and the Isavistin Teen Center, which we've maintained a, a positive working relationship with, um, with both organizations. We've been in contact with their, um, with, with their respective leadership. I would say that's one of the primary ways that we've communicated with, with all members of the, the community. Um, additionally, um, I've had different, um, spoken at different neighborhood meetings on the west end of Isla Vista with a lot of the more long-term property owners. So, um, I think kind of the, the groups other than students are primarily long-term property owners and then, uh, primar- primarily the Latino families. And I think that the Isavistin Youth Projects and the Teen Center have been how we've been outreaching to them. But I think we definitely need to do more.
What about the Community Outreach Committee, do you want to speak on that? By the way, John, I'm Jay.
We have, um, definitely, uh, uh, through our interns, we have reached out over into the Latino community. Um, and I think that's an area that there needs to be a lot more robust outreach. Um, but as to the west end, um, you know, I, I can just report back, there are a couple converts over there uh, that, that, that really have begun to see the CSD in a, in a more positive light. So, and I, I, I think the more we prove ourselves, the more that will get some traction. The folks on the street, um, uh, our houseless population, you know, we definitely, uh, we, we want everyone in the community to have a voice here. And, uh, I, I, I can report back that some of them look at this with great hope. Some of them have expressed great hope about what we're doing here, that this will be a more compassionate community, a more safe community.
What we spent a lot of time doing in the Community Engagement Committee is essentially brainstorming about all the different, um, subgroups, um, to the extent to which we even feel comfortable talking about subgroups.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Discussion of balkanization.
Right, right, right.
And, and trying to figure out, um, paths by which we could, um, outreach each of those different groups, um, looking at, um, particular specific people who might be good opportunities or looking at strategies, um, that we could use in order to do that. Uh, and so it's something that, um, we've got now many pages of notes that I'm compiling together into a report document to bring back to the board, but.
That's awesome.
The whole balkanization thing, uh, I, I have an, an often stated position that they're not populations, they're persons. And really, really that's been half of our problem in community building is that we, we, we turn everybody into a popu- uh, a balkanized population and then we deal with them like they're sort of monolithic, you know? We come up with a strategy to reach them rather than one-on-one. And, uh, you know, our, our best work gets done human to human.
Then one more thing I'll add is, I mean, I feel like local government all around the country is kind of an obscure thing for people and communities. Um, and I think that we constantly want to try to make it as straightforward as possible and as understandable as possible. But at the same time, um, as far as measuring success, I think I care more about if someone knows that they can now access, uh, community service officers late at night on the street. If someone knows that, um, in this room that we operate during the week, that we have a family literacy program two nights a week and that we have Thrive Isla Vista here once a week doing, uh, programming for parents. Um, if people know that when we roll out our tenant mediation program, uh, that they can now, uh, access this new service. Whether people know or not, um, that it's the CSD which is governed by seven officials making these decisions, um, I think that's helpful to know and that can help people become more engaged. But, but ultimately, um, I, I, I'm much more concerned about the, the service provision than people seeing that difference other things. And, yeah.
It's really resolved.
Yeah, I think this has been a really cool meeting. Uh, later on today, there's the Isavistin Fall Festival, so please be sure to check that out. And then, um, on the twenty-eighth, which is our next regular board meeting, we'll be having a tenants', uh, tenant mediation service discussion, um, town hall type. Um, additionally, Associated Students is hosting a tenant landlord town hall in this room this week on Tuesday night, six p.m.? Yeah, at six p.m. And that's more centered around inter-relations in terms of communication, would you say? How would you best describe that?
Well, I would say that, um, it, there had been, um, obviously very serious concerns around some of the relationships with the property owners in Ivy. Um, I know most recently we had an instance, of course, that evening was, um, was unfortunately, uh, uh, subjected to. And so we've already had some, um, uh, workshops around how to deal with issues such as entering property because it's been one of the ongoing concerns around particular properties. And so this, uh, this, um, town hall builds on those experiences and just kind of speaks broadly about what are, what are tenants feeling in terms of their interactions with the, with their, uh, property owners. So both kind of, uh, conversation about it and also some opportunities to know more about your rights and protections as tenants.
Anything to add, Kian? I know you were the author of that resolution.
No, I just, I'm glad that the community is coming together and standing together. And, um, I hope that some good comes out of this town hall and situations like this never happen again.
Well, with that, uh, we want to thank everybody for coming. Um, we went around, I think we got everyone's, um, name and contact information and, um, uh, whether or not they wanted to be involved. And as I'm looking at this, I see a lot of guesses, so, um, that's a, a really good sign for the community going forward. Um, for those of us on the ad hoc committee, if you have any particular questions about, um, things that are really in the weeds with this, we'd love to talk to you, um, just one-on-one. Um, always feel free to approach us and, um, you know, ask us whatever it is, uh, that you want or bounce ideas off of us. So with that, um, thank you all for coming. So a motion to adjourn. Second. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to motion to adjourn.
Okay, let's, uh, record that, so a motion to adjourn at one, made by, made by Jordan, seconded by Grant. Any public comment? All right, all those in favor, I opposed, any objections, so we're adjourned.